Get started. Jennifer?
On Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the Mainland Journal. Notice was also delivered that day to the Ed Harbor Township Clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Mrs. Bonjourno?
Here.
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
Ms. Hyman?
Here.
Mr. Ireland?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Seppi?
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Salagi?
Here.
We please stand for the flag salute.
The United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Grusio. That's you.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first work session, school board meeting for the 2022-23 school year. And we're very excited to report that we had a wonderful school opening despite the rain and the torrential downpours that came in the first couple days of school. Our transportation system did a wonderful job getting our students to and from, our teachers, administration welcoming our students, you know, keeping them covered with umbrellas, whatever it took to get the little ones into the buildings. But we had a successful opening. It was a lot of fun, a lot of excitement seeing kids back in the building. Next week, in my superintendent's report, I'll be sharing more information and videos and pictures of a little bit about that day. But I'm very, very pleased and happy with our staff and our parents and our students and the whole bit. We spent the first couple weeks, and we are still continuing, building relationships. So that is the embrace piece to our mission statement. And it's important, and our teachers know, and it's a message from me, take the time to build the relationships, to meet the students, meet the parents. We have back-to-school nights that started last week and continuing through this week. The turnout's been wonderful. It's great to have parents back in the buildings, and it's also exciting to feel that sense of normalcy again. So again, focusing on the embrace piece, building those relationships, and moving towards in the engagement where we will provide relevant learning experience for our students. So our teachers are working hard. We have state testing this week. Once we get that out of the way, you know, we'll be full steam ahead. And happy fall, everyone, and more to come next week. Thank you.
Okay, well, we have public comment, which is on agenda items only, and the board values and welcomes comments and opinions from our residents. This meeting will now be open to public comment, three minutes per person on agenda items only. If your questions pertain to litigation, student or personnel items, please see the superintendent after the meeting as the board does not discuss these matters in public. Depending on the nature and complexity of your questions, the board secretary may ask for your contact information so that someone can get back to you with a response. As a reminder, this is a public meeting, and all comments should be appropriate for a public setting and made in a respectful manner. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. Okay. So now we're going to move to committee reports, which is finance and operations. Mrs. Sullivan?
Good evening, everybody. Our meeting took place on the 13th at 4:00 PM, and it was an hour long in attendance where Mrs. Salagi, Mrs. Germaine, Mr. Woodrow, myself, and items that were discussed, facility updates, Mr. Woodrow, who is our new facility director, by the way, if you don't recognize the name, shared information on the door project from our bid number 21-05. He explained that there was a need for a change order to ensure that the correct hardware was put on all the new doors and to add doors and hardware at the high school that will address code violations. Mr. Woodrow also gave us an update on the underground drainage systems, both at Alder Middle School and Fernwood Middle School. The transportation department states that the buses are back on the road for the 2023 school year. There were some starts of year issues, but they're working through them really successfully. And of course, we're still in dire need of bus drivers. Food service, the free and reduced rate is currently at 44.22% and rising. Food service has processed 1,155 free and reduced applications to date. Mr. Beck reported that everything is proceeding well with food service, and they're working through little issues as they arise. Mrs. Germaine also shared that the district will be receiving another round of supply chain assistance funding. In addition, the styrofoam waiver was denied. Mr. Beck is working on alternatives. Mrs. Germaine shared that we are closing the financials for the 21-22 school year in preparation for our annual audit, which usually takes place in November. While things have been very busy in the business office, they're moving along, and they're looking forward to the new business administrator. Ms. Germaine, do you have any updates on anything that I've stated?
Just wanted to give everyone, including the committee, a notice. After the meeting, we were given information on two more projects that are going to come out of capital reserve at the next meeting. And we're going to be replacing three water heaters at the high school. We are currently running on one, and it's on its last life, so this will take care of that situation at the high school. We are also going to be doing balancing and testing of the HBC system, C system, sorry, at the high school. We received a grant in the amount of 4.8 million, and in order to start dispersing the funding, they need this balancing and testing report. So just so, because we're doing the one on this agenda, we're going to be doing another one. I want to make sure everyone was aware.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we need a motion for 6.2 to 6.4.
Motion, Ireland?
Mr. Price, second?
Mrs.?
Mrs. Bonjourno? Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Okay, personnel, we need a motion for, oh, wait a minute, yes, a motion for 8.2. I skipped over, sorry. Curriculum, committee report, Mr. Price?
Okay, I'm going to give you the curriculum report. I just had to get the mic. Curriculum. We met on 9/13/22 at 6:00 PM. The minutes, the hour was, the time was 1 hour and 15 minutes. Ms. Bonjourno, Mr. Delabarka, Mrs. Salagi, Mr. Price were attending, administrators attending, Dr. Grusio and Lily Moss, and our board solicitor, Amy Elko, was there as well. Subjects discussed: Routine agenda items discussed for professional development, field trips, and professional consultant contracts. As required by Department of Education, the emergency remote virtual instruction plan and safe return plan under SIR III will be on the agenda for approval. At the September 27th meeting, memorandums of understanding for our new youth transition to work grant in the areas of cybersecurity, manufacturing, and medical assistant training will be on for approval. We spent a majority of our time reviewing and discussing the 2020 health and physical education standards, curriculum, and resources. The district is focused on parent communication and transparency for lesson content and opt-out options. We reviewed the age-appropriate delivery of content and noted minimal changes to our current practice. The curriculum will be available on the district website, and parents will be encouraged to speak with their child's teacher to discuss any concerns. The committee discussed topics from previous meetings, including an eighth-grade recognition event that would allow parents and students to celebrate, to be celebrated, and to mark milestone of promotion to high school. Some ideas were a stepping up day or using the established eighth-grade barbecue to create a celebration. The next steps will be to get the middle schools and the parents' clubs involved. Also discussed was establishing a parents' club at the high school. The next step is for central administration to meet with the high school principal and parent representatives. A question was raised regarding a student's ability to practice or to participate in after-school band and academies. Is the district's practice that all students are able to participate in after-school and extracurricular activities regardless of their ability to take classes during the school day? Next meeting will occur on Thursday, September, I'm sorry, October 6th at 7 o'clock PM. We want to note that's Thursday. Topics to be discussed, possible topics to be discussed: Convocation at the middle schools and class-sized data. If anybody has any questions, I'm here. Otherwise, that concludes my report, and I believe Ms. Moss is going to add something to what I just read out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. So, on, as Mr. Price just shared, at our committee meeting, I shared a presentation around the health standards. As we know, this has become a very hot topic in the news and around our state. And so I wanted to make sure I shared with the full board and the public how we have taken these new standards and worked our curriculum, and truthfully have really minimal changes right now in our practice of how we are delivering this content in the standards. So on June 3rd, 2020, as you know, the State Board of Education adopted new standards, including the comprehensive health and physical education standards. And so from there, districts have until September 30th of this year to adopt and have curriculum aligned to those standards. The way that the curriculum, the standards are written, it's by grade bands. So by the end of grade 2, 5, 8, and 12, so there's a list of standards that you can complete between grades K and 2, between 5 and 8, by the 6, I mean, 3 and 5, 6 and 8, and 9 and 12. The standards are a blueprint for curriculum development, and it's up to the local districts to write their own curriculum and may choose to adopt their own resources of how to implement the curriculum. So the state does not tell us what resources to use, but rather, we create our curriculum to match the standards. Right now, our practices, our K to 5 health standards are delivered through interdisciplinary measures in the gen ed classroom, except for one lesson in fifth grade, the growing up lesson, which we have done for many, many years. That is taught from the physical education teacher. A letter goes home to parents every year explaining this lesson, what the content is that students will be learning, and of course, parents can always opt out of that lesson if they choose. In grade 6 to 12, health instruction is a marking period. It's provided by the physical education teacher. They currently send home the topics that are covered within that. We're going to continue that practice. It's going to go a little bit deeper, discussing exactly what the topics are and what each lesson with those topics are, so that parents and guardians have the option to opt students out of lessons or topics that they don't feel comfortable with. So the way the standards are, there's three main standards. Under each of those standards are disciplinary concepts. With each of those concepts, there are core ideas, which is like the spirit of those standards, and then the performance expectations. Those performance expectations are what students should be able to do and what they should know to show their teachers that they've mastered these standards. But it states very clearly from guidance from the state that we, as a district, can bundle those together and have the right to interpret how we carry out that curriculum. So in a lot of the standards, and I'm going to show you an example, you'll see parentheses that have examples in them. Those are just suggestions, and we have chosen as a district to eliminate all of those parentheses so that we are the ones deciding how to implement those standards. Like I said before, parent communication and transparency is really important. We're going to have letters informing parents of the topics, lessons, and resources that are going to be used, explain to parents their ability and how to opt out of individual lessons and topics based on any conflict or with moral or religious beliefs, and at any time they can see any of the lessons or resources by contacting the teacher. So here's an example of those core ideas, and it shows you the progression of the grade bands. So what personal growth and development looks like by the end of grade 2, by the end of grade 5, 8, and 12. So this is how it gets mapped out. So it's the same concepts across, but then it grows, obviously, in complexity throughout the grade bands. Here's where we get into those performance expectations. So that same disciplinary concept of personal growth and development and those core ideas by the end of grade 2, and now it's broken into the performance expectations. So here, I included one that is a very controversial one that I'm sure everyone has seen on social media. It talks about, you know, list medically accurate names for body parts, including the genitals. And that's by the end of grade 2. Our current practice right now in our district is promoting personal hygiene and self-help skills are obviously through our nurse and counselor lessons. But we do bring in the child assault prevention. They come in every year. We send letters home to parents informing them about this. We hold a parent night. They're well aware these lessons are happening. Our teachers have information. And through that program, they do talk about, you know, body parts and safety for students. So that is how we carry out that standard and how we will continue. This one, pregnancy and parenting, also by the end of grade 2, it talks about reproduction and the ways parents care for their offspring. We learn a lot about animals, about life cycles. We do, you know, caterpillars and butterflies. We read books about animals and animal babies and how there's differences. So it might be, you know, how a kangaroo holds a baby in their pouch, and then the conversation is around, you know, how is that different than the way people care for their children? Again, interdisciplinary, usually through read-alouts and different topics with science and reading. No changes there as how we would deliver that content. In fifth grade, the idea of reproduction and ways that pregnancy can occur, and you'll notice here, you'll see those parentheses, right? So it talks about IVF and surrogacy. You will not see that in our standards. It's not something that we're teaching, and it's an example that they have. We have a fifth grade growing up lesson. From the Great Body Shop is the resource. It covers all the standards, and there's no changes there either. So the same one that we've been doing. Same with eighth grade. It's taught through, in eighth grade, we discuss pregnancy and parenting. We discuss more about anatomy, about what, you know, goes on with the body. This will continue that practice. No changes there either. And then through grade 12, 9 and 12, students learn more about abstinence. They learn about communicable and non-communicable diseases and how, you know, adults and family members and who we can trust within our schools to help with these topics. So that's current practice right now in ninth and 12th grade. It will continue as the current practice in ninth and 12th grade. So there's really no changes to the way that we're delivering this and what grade levels. Here, we have second grade, social and sexual health. Same idea here. We right now handle through cancer lessons. This is just talking about family and how to have healthy relationships and communicate and handle conflict. So again, these are current practices that we teach, and there's no changes in any of the grade levels with the way that that's taught. I do just want to draw attention that any time in these standards you see those parentheses. So for example, demonstrate ways to promote dignity and respect for all people. That's a really important standard. That is something that we want our students to have, is tolerance, and that, you know, people might be different. And so that piece is definitely remaining in our standards, but everything within those examples is not in the, in our curriculum, but rather the idea of people just having differences and making sure that we're all tolerant and respectful of one another. By the end of eighth grade here, no changes. Again, we are currently teaching students about what sex is. Those lessons come home. Topics will be there for parents to choose whether they would like to opt out or see the resources that are going to be used. And this goes through. So our commitments as a district are to be as transparent and clearly communicate to parents and families about topics, lessons, and resources. Right now, in our K to 5 world, like I said, everything's interdisciplinary, except for that Great Body Shop lesson that we do in fifth grade. In grade 6 to 12, we currently, we were using some open resources and teacher-generated materials. I shared a resource that a teacher committee had found with the committee on Tuesday. It is a book. It's an online book, so there's access that everyone can see it. The parents would be able to see those lessons at home on the student Chromebook. That will just make it so that we're giving consistent information, and we know the topics and how they're being delivered across the board. And mainly, we're here to just promote tolerance, acceptance, and keep our kids safe. Anything to deal with additional resources, we want to make sure our students know where to go and where to get more information. And of course, parents and families are the first stop for that. Students are always encouraged to have follow-up conversations at home. And we just want to continue this partnership that we have with our families to make sure that we're all here to support our kids. So that is what I just wanted to share with everybody that I shared with the committee on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moss. So with that, if there's any questions, that will conclude the curriculum report.
I just wanted to say that you mentioned in the curriculum report that there's the possibility of having a parent-teacher association at the high school? That was a discussion point?
Yes, yes, there is.
Okay, I just want to say I'm glad to see that or hear that, excuse me, because I definitely do feel like we kind of take the, children, I feel like, middle school through high school, I think they need more assistance than they do just, I mean, you need involvement all the way through K to, K to 12, pre-K to 12, I understand that. But I think children are making vital decisions in middle school and high school, and parents definitely need to focus and pay attention to that. And I think having a PTA at the high school would be amazing to have. And I myself would love to be, participate in that as well. And the other thing was the after-school curricular activities, and you mentioned about if a student does not attend school that day, them having the ability to attend extracurricular activity practices, is that correct? Or that was a discussion point, or did I miss, maybe I misunderstood? I misunderstood, okay.
Ms. Moss, did you want to elaborate on that a little further? I could read it over again, but, okay, we'll clarify it for you and make it easier to understand.
What I thought was that if a child doesn't attend school that day, they can't participate?
Well, that is true.
Yeah, that's true.
But that was the, the question was about, a question came in regarding whether or not a student could participate specifically in band after school if they were not part of a band class during the regular school day. So we were just confirming that a student, that doesn't affect one another. So a student can participate in marching band or any extracurricular after school without taking a class, a specific band class within the school day.
All right. And the other piece I want to say is if, and I don't know what the policy says on attending after-school activities, but if, let's say if a student, regardless of the reason, they still cannot participate in a, in a practice after school if they had to leave school early for a dentist appointment, they could, they're still able to participate? Or if there was some serious event? I'm not sure what that looks like. It's in there? Is it the coach's discretion?
Well, I do know they have guidelines.
Okay.
I know for a day to count in school, you have to be in there, you know, just over four hours.
Right.
So
Okay.
But you have to be in school to participate after school.
Okay.
But yeah, we can get to more specifics on that, but, you know, if an athlete should have that information from their coach, and it should be consistent throughout all the teams at the high school.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion for 7.2? I will give you a discussion. Oh, we're going, after we do the motion, we do discussion. Okay. Motion for 7.2 and 7.3. Okay, now, discussion.
I just want to clarify that if you are in one of the academies and you carry a heavy load every day, you may still participate in band after school and then throughout the season. Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Bonjourno? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I have a quick question. With the parent letter that we're going to be sending out, is that going to be something that we're going to require to get back from the, each student? Or are we in discussion to do that?
We are in discussion regarding different options, so we'll have more information to come. Okay, thank you.
Roll call?
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Okay, personnel, we need a motion for 8.2.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion?
Who was the first? I'm sorry. Who was first? Who was the first motion? And who was second? Thank you so much. I apologize.
No discussion?
No discussion. Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Okay, policy, Mr. Ireland?
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to give out the policy committee report. We held the policy committee on Tuesday, September 13th, and the length was about an hour and four minutes. Board members attending that committee was myself, Patrick Ireland, Mr. Seppi, Ms. Juanita Hyman, and Mr. Michael Price. Administrators were Mr. Santilli and Dr. Grusio, and others was Ms. Amy Elko. The following policies and regulations were old business and required a second reading by the policy committee. No edits or changes were requested at this time. Policy 241505, student surveys and evaluations, examinations, testings, or treatment. Regulation 2460.30, additional and compensatory special education and related services. Policy and regulation 2622, student assessment. Policy 5511, dress and grooming students. Policy 5722, student journalism. Policy 9560, administration of school surveys. Policy 1648.15, record-keeping for healthcare settings and school business buildings. COVID-19 is a new policy that requires two readings and is aimed at protecting workers facing the highest COVID-19 hazards. Those working in healthcare settings were suspected or confirmed. COVID-19 patients were treated. Policy 2425, emergency virtual or remote instruction program is revised to adhere to the provisions for virtual or remote instruction to meet the 180-day requirement when schools are closed for a period longer than three consecutive school days due to a declared state of emergency, declared public health emergency, or a directive by the appropriate health agency or officer. Policy 3233 and policy 4233, political activities are being recommended for abolishment. However, both policies will now be found under policy 8233, which adheres to all staff, not just teaching staff or support staff. In addition, some minor revisions, including the revised term, Board of Chosen Freeholders to Board of County Commissioners, and freeholder and chosen freeholder shall be county commissioner. Policy 7540, joint use of facilities also was revised to update the same language. Policy 3325, certificated staff identification is being recommended for abolishment. However, similar language from the policy will now be included in policy 8443 for staff identification. Additions to policy 8443 will now include district property. Policy 5514, student use of vehicles was discussed by the committee. The committee was updated on the parking at the high school, which continues to be monitored and is going well. In addition, administration will evaluate if there are any students attempting to walk to school and
The Monday workshops are what, those of you who have been on the board, and when we had in-person meetings, will remember, or what used to be done on Thursday, this time is being done on the Monday. Tuesday's probably the day we might be most interested in attending. There is no floor open on Monday, so Tuesday is when the floor, where our different people are there for our, to attend and get all the goodies that you might pick up and people to talk to, would be Tuesday and Wednesday. Tuesday evening, I believe, we have a special event that is scheduled. Am I right, Mrs. Alco? At six o'clock, I think, at Ocean Resort?
Yes.
So you are all invited to that, I believe, so that'll be good. So that is the big thing. I hope you could all, if you could all attend the workshop, and we get a hundred percent attendance, there's a contest. I don't know if you've seen the literature that's out from the state regarding all of the counties attending, so we're trying to get all of our county members to attend, and I'm not sure that's going to happen, but we're working on it because we have some small districts and I'm not sure if they're going to be there. But I think Union County was the first one already to up there to get all of their local districts to attend, so Atlantic County's trying, so we'll see how we do on that. And that's my report for this evening, thank you. Oh, just one comment about my attendance at that, our opening meeting. Our vice president, Patrick Ireland, will be in attendance and take over, and our other vice president, Mr. Goldsmith, Henry Goldsmith, will be able to run the meeting, so they take, they're taking care of business. But I'm, I want to be there at the six o'clock time so I can meet Mr., Dr. Purnell and the different attendees. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Price, you have a question?
Yeah, going back to policy, the item six, policy fifty-five fourteen, we spoke about students walking to school, that type of thing. We'll report back to committee at a future date. I think we discussed that evening of possibly moving that discussion from fifty-five fourteen to eighty-six hundred, so that we can discuss it later, if need be. Do you recall that?
You are correct, Mr. Price, and that's why we have in there that we will report back to the committee at a future date.
Okay, so we're going to revisit fifty-five fourteen under eighty-six hundred transportation?
You are correct, Mr. Price.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Now, we're going to have public comment. Same rules apply, but it's for any topic. And one wish to come to the mic.
Hi, my name's Heather Delmar Boyle, three oh four Pine Avenue. I'm a parent of three young adults who graduated from the Egg Harbor Township Schools. I'm retired paraprofessional from the district, and I'm an EHT taxpayer. I hope that is all a testament to my dedication to, and my belief in the public school system in general, and more importantly, the Egg Harbor Township School District and the students it serves. I watched the last meeting as it streamed, as I do most meetings. I was curious when Ms. Moss indicated that three books had been removed from the Miller School Classroom Libraries. I decided to research these books, given the recent national trend of banning or removing those books, which make some people feel uncomfortable. So I looked up the three books that were removed from the Miller Classroom Libraries. Two of the books, Quiz Queens and Accidental Love, are for ages either eleven to twelve or twelve and up, so I can see that possibly the age range was the reason for pulling the books. George, which is recommended for ages eight to twelve, which is Miller's population, is about a student who is identified as male but wants to be recognized as female. I believe that's why it was pulled. No book ever caused someone to doubt their gender identity if they didn't already do so. But any student who does and has nowhere to turn might be helped to know that they are not alone. Children's with questions about their gender identity or their sexual orientation need to know that they are normal. They need to know they are not alone. I'll probably be roasted on social media for this, but I hope that the book, George, will be allowed back into the libraries. Children need to see their possibilities, and children need to accept their peers for who they are. These children need representation. These children are in our district, and they need recognition, and they need support. Books like George will pave the way for them. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adrian Mobley from one oh eight North Third Street, Pleasantville. Retired firefighter, EMT, and retired from Atlantic City Hospital, too. I'm here on behalf of my nephew, who plays sports, and he was also on the soccer team. He played for about twelve years. I received some really disturbing news after being a coach for over seventeen years. I coached football and wrestling. I've been involved with the youth for a very long time, all my life. I never, ever, as a coach, would deny any of my players from playing. Unbeknownst to knowing the talent that they possess and what they grow on as they achieve, as they go on and play further on down the road. I received a letter for my niece, the coach at Center. My nephew played AAU soccer just about all of his life. He didn't get a chance to play his sophomore year. Coach said he's not good enough. He seems to want to do his own thing. To me, this is a double-edged sword, because you're showing that he's not good enough. On the other hand, he played for the AAU MVP, and he won certain championships. Now it's his senior year. I don't know if you ever got involved with a sport that you loved, and you played all your life. By the time it came to be your senior year, you want to play. You have, school's looking at you. You sent letters off. It's like a dream. To be denied to, to play is one thing. To tell you that you're not good enough? He was an MVP. Coach mentioned lacking of skills. He's out of shape. He just finished playing AAU. I don't believe that he's out of shape. We could sit here and make up all kinds of excuses. One was his grades. He's got his grades up. Coach still says he wants to do his own thing. This kid is a team player. I'm here today because I'm vouching for him and hoping that y'all would take a look into this. Although I do help the kids in Pleasantville, I'm also a part of the care program after school. I'm retired now. I teach those kids everything they need to know, CPR at age eight, how to get out of a burning building alive. I take the time to teach them this. I had one teacher tell me, why are you doing this? I said, because the kids in third world countries already got it down pat. This kid here, he worked real hard to get where he's, he's at today. And still, the coach, as I'm reading, he's not good enough. He says, I got my own team now. He says, and he's not a part of it. I'm just asking that you look into this matter, because this is destroying our youth. Ms. Morrison, Ms. Moss, I'm sorry, you said we would do anything for our kids, and we have their backs. I'm hoping that's true, because you're breaking this kid's heart. If you could place yourself in that situation, it hurts. This is his last year. The community in the town, who comes out to watch this kid, he's awesome, and I'm not just speaking, just him, himself, just the team, because some of those players are on this team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mobley. We'll look into the situation. I believe it's already in the process, all right? And I just want to let you know, we are in contact with the, with the parent. Okay?
Good evening, board members, board president, superintendent, assistant superintendent, and community. My name is Rick Norris, retired teacher from Atlantic City High School District, thirty-four years. However, I'm here to piggyback off what Mr. Mobley just talked about, Kevin Watson, was a soccer player.
I just want to let you know that the board can't comment on any student matters.
No problem, yeah. I just want to be heard, that's all.
Okay.
Appreciate it. History of player, couldn't play his sophomore year because his grades dropped. I hear that he had a girlfriend problem. Some of us had girlfriend problems, that we haven't been taught how to deal with a letdown that needs to be added into our curriculum because it's peer pressure. Also, continuing on his histories, Mr. Watson has played in AAU, which built discipline, teamwork, and social skills. Since then, his senior year, his grades have improved, having been a discipline problem. Learned how to deal with girls now, which is a plus. Now, I have four questions, and I understand that you guys can't answer, but I do have four questions. What is requirements to be eligible to play a high school sport? Question, is there a roster cutoff? The next question is, what is there, I mean, what is the, what is the problem with Coach Lambert, if there is a problem, as far as denying his kid to play? And here is my big concern. No, I have a minute and ten seconds. Future graduations is, for this kid is affected. Being scouted by college reps will be visiting your school and schools in this community and county. That jeopardize if he can't play. Acquiring degrees or degree, which will catapult him into improving his quality of life. When kids graduate our school system, we want them to learn from their mistakes, if they have made any, and to become a better person, a better citizen. And also, to, again, to learn from their mistakes. So again, the requirement is, what is the requirements to be eligible? When I was coaching, a kid had to have a GPA of two point five or better, no discipline problems, have to meet the standards set forth by the Board of Education, have to pass a physical, which this young man have. And then my final question is, never heard of this, is there a cutoff for the roster? In other words, you have to have a certain amount of kids, like you say, forty kids to play, and once you reach forty, that's it. So when I was coming up, if you made the team, you made the team, and you was eligible to compete, to be the starter. Thank you very much.
Mr. Norris, I'm sorry, can I please get your address?
Yes, forty thirty-nine Ridge Avenue, Egg Harbor Township.
Thank you so much.
Quite welcome.
Mr. Norris, thank you very much for your questions and comments, but as superintendent, I do encourage the child's parent to get in touch with, first, the coach. If the answer is not provided there, then the athletic director for more insight on the situation. The high school principal would be next, the assistant superintendent of central office, if they, you know, still didn't get answers, and then me, the superintendent. The board is sitting here listening to the situation, which, you know, it is a public meeting, and we can, you know, you absolutely have the right to share, but I, I just want to encourage you that you will get your answers at the school level, okay? So I will provide you with numbers if the parent is here. Thanks, hi, Mom. If that helps you, you know, get to the bottom of the situation a little bit more, okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katrina Dunn. I am the parent of the child that you guys are discussing. I followed the proper, the proper protocol as far as talking to coach, administrator, the, what is it, the AD, as well as superintendent, assistant superintendent, and no one has gotten back to me. We had a, we held a meeting, and the issue wasn't resolved. So now, we're just taking an extra step further, because this is his senior year, and I'm very concerned. And I just want to know what's, what is going to be the next step?
I'm going to have to go back and share, you know, the situation with the principal and see where we are. Did you meet with her? Was there a meeting set up with her?
I had a meeting last, two Fridays ago.
With, with the high school principal?
With all the coaches and the athletic director.
Okay, did you meet with the high school principal?
She, they referred me to them, and that's when they set up the meeting, and that's as far as it's been.
Okay, so she would be the next step?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
We'll take care of that for you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dunn, can I please get your address? I'm sorry.
Can I just reject to give you, because I'm a public figure as well? Thank you.
When is soccer season over? And how much time do we have to get back to this lady?
We'll get back tomorrow. Sock, to answer your question, soccer goes into November, depending upon if the team makes the NJSI tournament. Regular season ends the last week of October.
And is there a quota, like Mr. Norris asked? So is there like a set amount according to NJS, what is IAA? You only can have, say, ten students on, to your knowledge? Do you know if there's only a set amount of kids that can be on the team? I think that's what he was asking.
Yeah, and for NJSI, and not to my knowledge, but for varsity, JV, and freshman competition, particularly varsity, I'll focus on varsity, I mean, you know, for the roster, I don't think they carry forty students. I don't know what their numbers are. I know there are lots of athletes out for soccer, but we can find out more.
Okay, because I was just thinking, I mean, we're, we're, our, our model was embracing our students and including them and making them feel like they're part of the school community. I think this is something that needs to be looked at, like ASAP.
I have a comment.
Thank you, that's all I have to say.
I believe that's what Dr. Grusio said was going to happen tomorrow. They will be looking into it, so it is going to be taken care of.
I hope so.
May I comment? Are we going to close without a comment? Got it.
I think I was entitled to three minutes, I wasn't finished. I think the more so of the issue is, it's been ongoing since August. Season has started, everybody's playing, and now you have a kid that's left out, who is also subjected to being out in the streets, since he cannot participate in after-school sports. And that's something that I think that should be looked into, because- With all the coaches and the athletic director.
Okay, did you meet with the high school principal?
She, they referred me to them and that's when they set up the meeting, and that's as far as it's been.
Okay, so she would be the next step with her, alright?
Okay, thank you.
We'll take care of that for you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dunn, can I please get your address? I'm sorry.
Can I just reject to give it because I'm a public figure as well?
When is soccer over? And how much time do we have to get back to this lady?
We'll get back tomorrow. Sock to answer your question, soccer goes into November, depending upon if the team makes the NJSI tournament. Regular season ends the last week of October.
And is there a quota, like Mr. Norris asked? So is there like a set amount according to NJS, was IAA? You only can have say ten students on, to your knowledge, do you know if there's only a set amount of kids that can be on the team? I think that's what he was asking.
Yeah, and for NJSI, and not to my knowledge, but for varsity JV and freshman competition, particularly varsity, I'll focus on varsity. I mean, yeah, for the roster, I don't think they carry forty students. I don't know what their numbers are. I know there are lots of athletes out for soccer, but we can find out more.
Cause I was just thinking, I mean, we're, we're, our, our motto is embracing our students and including them and making them feel like they're part of the school community. I think this is something that needs to be looked at like ASAP.
Thank you, that's all I have to say.
I believe that's what Dr. Grushio said was going to happen tomorrow. They will be looking into it, so it is going to be taken care of.
I hope so.
May I comment? Are we gonna close without a comment? Got it.
I think I was entitled to three minutes, I wasn't finished. I think the more so of the issue is, it's been ongoing since August. Season has started, everybody is playing, and now you have a kid that's left out. Who is also subjected to being out in the streets since he cannot participate in after school sports. And that's something that I think that should be looked into because everybody, it shouldn't be a cutoff when it comes to a senior. Senior, as was stated, this is when schools start looking at you for colleges. Even making little remarks on a report from, from high school, colleges look at that. So when you degrade somebody on a report, that follows them, and it shouldn't be allowed. That's all.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank all of you sitting up there, because I know what a time dedication that you guys are taking. And I don't want to take up too much of your time, but when I walked in today, I was a little bit late, but Dr. Grushio was saying that right now, we're working on embrace, building relationships. And I couldn't agree anymore with the need to build relationships with our students. How can our, how can we engage our students when they feel, don't feel valued at school? My oldest has a three point nine three grade point average, doesn't take a study hall, but she now wants to quit school. She's been talking about going to college since she was three. But now, that might be off the table too. I'm looking at my daughter and I'm seeing her walls crumbling down. I'm hoping that the administration has taken a chance to start addressing the shortfalls that I've mentioned two months ago regarding 504s. About training, regard, excuse me, about training, implementing a 504 plans. Sensitivity towards students' disabilities, although the disability may be invisible. Fair and appropriate investigations for students with documented disabilities on 504 plans. Remember that evidence isn't always true because students with disabilities, and I know with an IEP, we call it a manifestation of a disability. But it can happen with any student that has a 504, that has a documented disability. So I think that our administration needs to be trained on how to deal with our students. I also would love to see some kind of testing, and I'm not talking about testing that we give, the extensive testing we give to a student if we think that they need an IEP or special ed. But our students with 504s, they deserve more than we're giving them. And there's ways for us to test them to see what kind of strengths they have and what kind of learning paths will be best for them. Cause as you see, my daughter with a three point, three point nine three grade point average, she didn't shrink back this year. She's taking an AP class. She upped her English to honors. She's still going forward even though she wants to quit. Students with disabilities, it doesn't mean that they have a learning disability. There's so many ways that our students can be disabled and just need a little bit of extra help. But that first piece is embrace. And if our children are not feeling embraced, whether it's with coaches, so I can tell you, my daughter's field hockey coach is the absolute best coach I've ever met in my life, ever. And she is the one maybe you guys should have training other coaches because unfortunately, as many of you guys know, my daughter almost took her life two years ago after a coach after a coach didn't know how to deal with her. This is a serious problem, and you guys know I am the biggest cheerleader of Eggerford Township. I am a proud graduate of EHT. Many of the people that I graduate with, we are successful. We've raised amazing children. And I want my child to be just as successful or more successful than I am, and God knows, she is smarter than me. You never see that kind of grade on my, my report cards when I was a kid. But unless she feels wanted, unless she feels respected, it's never gonna happen. And I can't just move her school. I love Eggerford Township. This is, this is my place. I love it. On the flip hand, many of you know my little one, that is fourteen and four foot seven and eighty-two pounds, but she walked in the first day of school with her 504 and handed it to each teacher. And I have to say, two of her teachers emailed me and they were so impressed with how she handled herself that they felt they need to reach out to me. So there are definitely teachers out there in our district that do take their 504 seriously, and I'm very thankful for that. And one more thing, because I know my time is up, but I'm hoping for next year, maybe administration can think of a way that I can go to all three of my children's back to school night since they're all at the high school. Thank goodness I have found people to help me this year, but, you know, that'd be helpful.
Could you give your name and address?
I'm so sorry.
What's your line?
No, I can't, no, just kidding.
I know who you are.
Terry Alabarta, two oh six Westwood Road. I'm sorry, I was so excited when I got up here.
Is there anybody else?
My name is Jose Luna. I'm Coach Jose Luna. I came, I come here to talk about Kevin Watson. I used to live in Eggerford Township like, until three years ago, since I lived in Eggerford Township for fifteen years ago. I'm, I'm soccer coach. When my son was five years old, I came to, I wish I knew about this place, the board, before. I came to put my son to play soccer in Eggerford Township. They don't let him play because he was five years old. I said, I can help you. I was semi-professional player in Mexico. I'm very good player, I'm very good coach. They say no. My son cried a lot that day. One, one guy from Pleasantville come and say to me, you want, I let you play my, your son, my son was only five. He helped me, he saw your son is very good player. I said, I can help you. I helped this gentleman, the name is Robert Maduro. I helped him. I came with a lot of kids. I start working with these kids. And I promised myself, since Eggerford don't let me play my kid there, they never beat us again. I coached Pleasantville for seven, eight years. I don't know if somebody knows me. Eggerford never beat us again, never, because I coached the kids very well. I have four, I got four kids and US, and the US national teams, like U eighteen, U fourteen, U fifteen, okay? Maybe it's not a lot for you, but for soccer players, it's a lot. What I tried to tell you when she told me about Kevin, Kevin was one of my players. Now, I think we never lost a game for four, five years. When she tell me about Kevin, I know Coach Lambert, I've been having little problems with him. Since she told me about Kevin, I said, how Kevin is gonna be, he, Kevin always been a winner, and he's been a, this is one of the players you can use in a keeper, defense, striker. That means he, you can, you can use Kevin many ways to play. So, I, I can, I also can tell you, I've been in the English, English class plays where all the soccer goes. Try to help Eggerford. I'm not in Eggerford no more, but sometimes I try to, we had to find better coaches to see better players. Like, it's for the kids, it's not for me. I've been, I've been coaching Pleasantville. I don't charge a dollar because my son is there and I want kids grow up. And all Atlantic County, I don't think there is a coach win more titles than me. And everybody knows me, Galway up second, every single, the best teams, they have two or three players from, that I made. So I think they not doing the right thing with Kevin Watson, because Kevin Watson is a very good player. When she talk, when, after, I see the roster, because my son now is in Galway High School. I see the roster from Eggerford. I know Kevin can be in the top ten players. And I feel bad if they take Kevin out, out of the soccer team. So my name is Jose Luna. If you need any questions, and, and you can tell everybody my name about soccer player, uh, coach from Pleasantville, they can tell you who I am. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I please get your address?
My, my address is three twenty-six Maria Loretta Lane, Galway, New Jersey, zero eight two oh five. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Coach.
Hello, my name is Gabrielle Luna Salazar. I, I went to EHT, I lived in EHT most of my life until I switched to high school, I went to ACIT. And I think it was one of the best choices I made in my life. My dad's soccer coach, as you said, and I seen many good players, and one of them is Kevin. And I know a lot of guys in the county that my dad trained, and I can tell you, those are phenomenal players. I know soon I will be seeing them professional. I feel like we should give everybody a chance to play, no matter if you're good, no matter if you're bad, or no matter if you want to try. Everybody should get a chance to play, no matter if you're a girl, boy, or whatever color you are. Doesn't matter. No, you should get, get discriminated for something they love to do. As I always tell my little brother, he's a freshman in high school, don't give up. Even if you're the smallest one on the team, he's a freshman this year, I was like, you compete with them seniors, they, they're not gonna beat you. You're capable of many things, those seniors probably are not. But I feel like we should give everybody a chance, and it's his senior year, and I have a little brother and I would not want, want him to miss out on his senior year. So I hope this case comes up soon and I get to see him play soon, because I know many players in EHT High School who are in the varsity team. And I know many players at ACIT, GAM, Atlantic City, everywhere, and they need, all of them need a chance. And if those players have a chance, I feel like Kevin should have a chance too to play. Because my dad's phenomenal coach, I'm not trying to gas up my dad, but he, he did a lot of work for these guys. And a lot of guys don't see it yet, but soon, they will. And I'm not, I don't want to name people, but a player who played in EHT one day, he made it, I forgot where he made it, but his dad called my dad to thank him, that his dad made it, that his son made it in the big leagues. So I hope to see Kevin playing soon in the stands and I'll be at the games. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I please get your address?
Yes. Three twenty-six Maria Loretta Lane, Galway, New Jersey.
Anyone else? Okay. Does anybody have anything to say?
Yeah, I would just like to say, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight and getting an understanding of what's happening here and trying to wrap my mind around it. And my question is, in general, not necessarily this particular situation, but what is the criteria to decide when somebody doesn't make a team or whether they're accepted or not? Is that usually something that's done with the media coaches? And is there an appeal process in the event that someone, you know, has a concern? What, what, what is the process in place to address this? Is that something we're doing now that has been brought to the board? Thank you.
So I can't speak to all the criteria, but usually has to do with, you know, players in, in the organization. On the team throughout the year, their freshman year, their sophomore year, their junior year, if they played, you know, if they're in the program in their, in their senior year. I can't speak to all the coaches if they have tryouts. I believe soccer does. The criteria, I'd have to ask, not soccer coach, Coach probably knows more than, than, than I do sitting up here in terms of skill level. You know, I know there's criteria for grades, they have to be eligible grade wise. You know, I can find out more for you. As far as an appeal process, it's not something that, that the board entertains, to my knowledge, whether a student makes a team or participates in an activity. So I will get the board more information in terms of, you know, the, the coach's handbook. The, the parent will have that discussion with the athletic director and with, with the principal at this time. Alright, so I don't believe the board will be getting involved. It hasn't come to my level yet. So, but I will share with you, with the Board of Education, updates.
Okay, so we'll look forward to an update then at this, at our level. Okay, thank you.
Public portion's been closed, did you-
It was awful with the comment that he was thinking about the, um, because you might not know this, what I was just told.
Okay.
As far as academic wise.
Turn it off.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. As far as academics is what I was told as well, even when a child is falling behind in grades. I know this because I used to coach as well, I'm not gonna, in Pleasantville, but when they fell behind, we were able to talk to the teachers to set up a type of plan that will help them bring up their grades. So we all kind of worked together and not just, hey, we coming out for tryouts and you get there and they tell you that you don't qualify because of your grades. So that was one thing that I found out as well, is coming into this team that they don't do. I was told that they weren't able to see grades. And that was the part that kind of stuck out to me, and I'm like, why? That's something that should be in play. But I just wanted to let you know, and as far as criteria, from what I was told as well, if you didn't play in the program for all four years, that kind of helped, I mean, it kind of hurts you trying out for your senior year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just want to comment on that. There, there, we are governed, our athletics in high school are governed by the NJSISA. And students are required to have so many credits per year, I believe thirty-five Carnegie units, credits for the high school each year in order to participate. So there is definitely that criteria that comes from that governing body, particularly for the varsity sport, so we'll, we'll look into this.
Thank you. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Public portion is closed now, okay.
I get, I think what she's saying, and maybe it's something that this district doesn't do, but most school districts will follow their, their students and mentor them to make sure that they're on point with their grades. A lot of school districts, they do that. And that they talk to the teachers and they see, well, you're failing in a subject, you know, what can I do to help you, get you a mentor or whatever? That's what she's trying to say, and I think that this school district has to understand that this district is changing and we have to change with the district. These kids, some of these kids need someone to, you know, help them along, if they need tutoring, show them, you know, what they need to do to keep their grades up. And I think that's what the mom is saying, and I just think the fact that this mother coming out here, fighting for her child like this, says a lot about how much she believes in her child and how good of a player he is. Because I've never seen this before in my life, a parent coming out fighting like this. So I think just think something that we really, really need to look at. Thank you.
I, I'm gonna look to Ms. Moss, because I, I know that we do have programs in place to work with our, with our students, MTSS. We have the tutoring centers at the high school, so again, I'm gonna look into the situation and see, you know, with the services that were provided. Lily, I don't know if you would like to comment on what this high school has for students?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Grushio. I think you just covered a lot of it. We do have tutoring center that's open every period of every day, so that students can go in for help or to make up work with a teacher in there. There's usually an English at a math teacher that are in there every day. We do also have, yeah, our INRS process, if students are falling behind in grades, they should be referred there to get that extra support. We do have groups after school, our honor society kids do offer tutoring in the library. And really, anytime a student needs extra help, can go to the teacher and get that information. But I do think that that is important to know, and certainly something we can talk about with our athletic director, director and coaches about opportunities for students who need that extra support after school, who are already involved with sports.
So to just sum it up, we are, you know, going to look into it, we'll get back to you as soon as possible, and appreciate all of you being out tonight, your passion. And, you know, that's, that's highly respected and admired. So thank you again, and tomorrow I will be in touch with the high school staff and we'll get more information for you and also for the board, I'll share updates, okay? Thank you.
On an entirely different note, I just want to bring to everybody's attention that this Saturday is our Pride Festival. There'll be all kinds of booths there, crafters, you'll, you can learn anything you want about our school district. There'll be different booths for any information you might want to pick up, so I highly recommend everybody to attend our festival on Saturday. Thank you. Yes?
So, and, and Dr. Grushio, I know that your, the team is gonna look into the situation that was presented tonight. So, and, and Dr. Grugio, I know that your, the team is gonna look into the situation that was presented tonight. I just, I guess, just in your probing and in your investigation, looking into it, and not to mention, I'm not mentioning any personnel or anything like that, but I just wanted to know, I guess, it's the child's senior year, so I was just wondering, have we had the same coach in place since that child has been there? Is there an established relationship between the, maybe between the coach and the student? You know, positive or not positive, I'm not sure what the relationship may have been or in the past? And there were a few things that really stood out to me, and, and like I said, I wasn't there, I wasn't in the conversation, don't know, but just out of shape, wants to do his own thing.
So Ms. Gilbert Floyd, I'm just gonna caution you as a board member. This person is not Rice Dior, talking about an individual who is a sole person for something. So maybe that's a conversation you want to have with Dr. Grugio separately.
Okay, so I scratched that other part. So my only thing is, I'm just saying, what I did hear the parents say, I don't know who said it or where the child got that. I don't know where those statements came from about out of shape and wants to do their own thing. I'm not sure where those statements came from, but I think those should be some of the high points that we look, that should be looked into.
Dr. Grugio has stated that she will look into the situation and she will keep the board informed as to what she finds out. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion, Ireland.
Second Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye. Just get a red light.